Must be time to start. We call this meeting to order. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Burlington City Council Meeting Number Six, March 19th, 2012, at 6:30 in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers in City Hall. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll call, please?
Fleming?
Here.
McCamble?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here. First item on our agenda, if you look at your agendas, is a proclamation of retirement for Phil Collier, Parks and Recations Director, and Rick Law, Wastewater Treatment Facilities. And we have these nice proclamations, but neither one of them is here. So we're going to mention that Rick is retiring after 29 years, and Phil is retiring after 35 years, I think it is. And so we want to thank them publicly and wish them well in their retirement, and we'll give them the proclamations later. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item One Consent Agenda, having been discussed or considered to be routine by City Council, will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. Discussion is desired, that item will be removed, and will be considered separately. On the consent agenda tonight, we have finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarette licenses, reports and bonds. We have five resolutions. Resolution approving nuisance abatement for property. Resolution renewal of taxi cab vehicle for hire license for John Salvador doing businesses as executive transportation. Resolution approving renewal of taxi cab vehicle for hire license for Robyn Canova, excuse me, Scepter doing businesses A to Z taxi and delivery service. Resolution approving renewal of taxi cab vehicle for hire license for Dennis Maines doing business as Yellow Cab. And a resolution approving purchase of a chipper-knuckle boom truck for the Parks Department, Forester Division. We are setting the date for two public hearings, April 2nd, consideration of the property locally known as 524 South Marshall, and on April 16th, consideration of plans and specifications with 2012 Black Hawk Elementary Sidewalk Extension. And we have three appointments. Mayor Pro-Tam Reed?
Yes, Your Honor, we have three appointments for the Human Rights Commission, Ruby McGrault, who's, I think, here. Thank you. Construction Board of Appeals, Bruce Brockway. And Riverfront Advisory Committee, Joanne Bower.
And she's here also. Thank you for coming, and thank you for serving.
Yes, we like to always put a name with the face.
So thank you very much. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to remove any of these items from the consent calendar? Counsel, any... How would entertain a motion, then?
Make a motion to approve all listed under Item One Consent Agenda.
Second that.
We have a motion as second. Kathleen, roll call, please.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCamble?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is time set for a hearing for consideration of plans and specifications for the 2012 Cascade Watershed Sewer Separation Project Phase One. Publication's been made in the Hawkeye, as prescribed by law, and we're open for public discussion. First, we have a presentation from...
Our city engineer, Steve Hartman.
Steve Hartman. Would someone turn off the middle light switch on the wall there, please? Thank you, Todd.
This is Phase One of an ongoing sewer separation effort. City of Burlington's under consent order to separate the remainder of our sewers between this year and about 2025. So this project is in the Cascade drainage basin. Total project includes 9800 millimeter feet of pipe and about 110 structures. This will be new storm sewer infrastructure. Project cost estimated for Phase One is 1.63 million. We've funded with sewer revenue bonds. I believe there are about 3.5 million in sewer revenue bonds to cover this. I'm going to step through the slides. These are the different areas that we'll be working in this summer. We anticipate a letting date on April 5th of this spring. So we're looking at an overview here. We're basically on Jackson, Harrison, and Hedge, west of 13th Street. The other part of the project is on Harrison, from Fourth Street, east to the Bluff. The areas in between there will be in consecutive phases and/or in change orders as necessary. Division A will be on Page Street, between Harrison and Jackson. Division B is basically on Jackson, between Olive and Delmar. We've got sewer going in on Laurel Street, between Harrison and Jackson. Hedge Street, between Laurel and Olive, connecting to Harrison. We've got some more sewer on Hedge Street, from Whittier to 16th, connecting to Harrison. Jackson Street, between Summer and 16th, connecting down 16th Street. Harrison Street East is basically along Harrison Street... I'm sorry, this is west, Summer to 13th. We stop at 13th, some of the areas between Fourth and 13th, we're going to look at a little closer for where to direct that storm water. Currently, the water separates and goes several different directions in its combined sewers. We've got a division on Summer Street, Dunham to the fire station. This division includes some area drains back to the fire station and the hangar. And now the Harrison East side is from Fourth Street to the Bluff. We're picking up some sewers on Fourth at Hedge, and then there's a low point on Third Street, we're picking up just south of Harrison. These projects are anticipated for the summer months this year, and with continued efforts toward Phase Two, working with the airport, and looking at some other areas where we would take drainage, like I said, between Fourth and 13th. Any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions for Steve? Is there anyone from the audience wishing to address counsel, or have a question for Steve?
Eric Renteria, 907 High Street. And I just had a question for you. The amount of sewer pipe that we're putting in the ground is just going to double. It's significantly more expensive to maintain two different sets of plumbing than it is one. And while I understand that we're mandated to do this, what I haven't really heard, and what I'd be interested to know, is what the net effect of this is. You know, when you talk about what goes out into the river, or what the net result or benefit for the environment or for the city is, I haven't really heard that. I was wondering if you might be able to address that for us. Thank you so much.
City of Burlington does have combined sewers. I don't have any specific numbers for you, but we have structures called CSO structures, combined sewer overflows. And it depends on the different systems in Burlington. Some, a light one-year rain might surcharge the system to exit into the river. In some cases, it's a heavier rain that will cause that overflow. I guess the bottom line is that these overflows do contain raw sewage. This configuration is very similar to other communities along the Mississippi River and their original construction from 150 years ago. We see this all down in the city of Burlington.
Any other question from the audience? Comment?
You know, I think, Eric, too, that, you know, like you were alluding to, that this is mandated by the EPA and the DNR. Certain things we don't have control over, and this is one of them. You know, it's one of these unfunded mandates that the government wants us to do, and they don't help us one bit. So, you know, it's just... I understand what you're saying, trust me, but it's just one that, you know, they gave us a timeframe to do this, and a lot of cities are way behind where Burlington's at, so we're a little bit ahead, so, right now.
And just a point to that, the city did receive some EPA grants.
Oh, did they?
With the Hawkeye Sewer, um... But for the record, it's still a good thing that we're doing it. We don't want raw sewage, you know, it's just overflowing. So, I mean, it's... Some of these will be done.
And also, too, that may help is, with the separation of the two, we aren't... We don't have to treat that water that we normally wouldn't treat if it ran through the storm sewer versus in the sanitary sewer.
Good point. Anyone else from the audience? Counsel, you have any other questions, comments?
I'd like to make a motion to close.
Second that.
A motion as second to close the hearing. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCamble?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
So we have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2012 Cascade Watershed Sewer Separation Project Phase One.
Second. We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, counsel? We know it's a lot of money.
Has to be done.
But it is what it is. Okay? Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCamble?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, audience. Thank you, Steve. Now, we have time for consideration of an ordinance rezoning the properties locally known as 2270 and 2280 Florence Avenue to include a planned unit development, locally known as the Masters PUD. Overlay zone is allowed by Section 17.20.40 of Title 17 of Burlington Municipal Code. This was continued from our March 5th council meeting. And Dan, or do you want Eric to go?
Yeah, Eric will cover this. It's just some changes from the past ones that you've had several months ago.
Yes, this is a request. It is, you know, a couple council members, but Mr. Zager has requested to place a PUD overlay zone on his property at 2270, 2280 Florence Avenue, to allow for construction of a condominium development at the site. Currently, it's owned R1, single-family residential, and a PUD is allowed by our code, and it places an overlay zone on the property to place additional restrictions and also allow different uses and other aspects of the development. I'm going to show a couple of maps here, just to show where we're at. It's located at the... In Florence Avenue, just east of Crystal Drive. This area, highlighted in black here, a little over two acres in size. And then, post-development, without a final plan, this is a general layout of the development. It included cul-de-sac on the west side, and then homes along the east and northern side of the development. As part of the development, it was approved by the Planning Commission on January 9th, 2012, with a recommendation to approve it to the City Council, based on the Future Land Use Map and Conference Plan, and based on the request by the developer. They did make the recommendation to allow nine units in this development. As you see here, it could include up to four duplexes and one single-family home with nine units and five structures. The exact layout, I guess, would be dependent on how it develops by the developer, but the PUD just sets parameters for the overall development. It would have the R1 setbacks, 25 feet on the rear, seven feet on the sides. The density would essentially meet the R1 district, which is one unit per 9,000 square And then, having the cul-de-sac was something discussed by council previously, with the public street cul-de-sac at the end of it, to allow public access and turnaround there. Again, the PUD is allowed within zoning code. It is Section 17.20.40 of the zoning code. It is designed to allow conference of plan projects, where it can follow set of minimum requirements, but also permit flexibility in the zoning requirements. It's been used in many other parts of town for commercial, residential, and industrial developments. We've had a few residential developments in R1 areas, allow duplex condominiums through the PUD, the Mason Meadows subdivision, Sunrise West subdivision. A little different in some aspects, similar in others, especially the Sunrise West, coming off of Gilbert. That was a single-family street going into a duplex condominium development, such as this, at the end of Denham Street. It's since been further developed to allow through-street. It has been done in other areas. Based on our Future Land Use Map, which does break down the city into future or proposed uses, our land use map of our conference of plan only designate single-family slash duplex. It doesn't state this area is only single-family. It allows for a mixture throughout the community, and this area is in the single-family duplex area. And one other reason, I guess, we looked at the PUD, condominiums are somewhat of a new type of development. With the Sunrise West and Mason Meadows, it's become a little more prevalent in the last five or 10 years, but some communities address some, allow zero lot-line development, allow a duplex essentially on two separate lots, even though it's one building. Our code doesn't address that. It's not something within our zoning regulations, so the PUD was appropriate to address something that currently under our zoning code. That could be looked at in the future, but right now, the PUD is a method we have to look at this, as a condominium which each side is owned by an individual. It's not a typical duplex, where it's one owner and oftentimes rented out, but it is a separate ownership on either side of the duplex. So that kind of gives some history, and I guess our code requirements and background in it. If you have any other questions, I'll try and answer that.
I have some questions. Eric, you know, I'm new on the council, so I know a lot of these things may have been covered before, and I just need to clarify a few things. Is this now R1 or R2?
It's currently R1.
But it was R2 before?
It's always been R1.
Okay, it's always been R1?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I was confused there by someone. And I guess I have a concern about the water runoff. And I went out there, and I noticed that it's all rutty, you know, like ruts down through there, so... And I know the golf club has some concerns about water running down there, and I can understand those concerns. So I... When I've asked about this, and I guess there's a holding place for water?
Yeah.
Where is that on...
Steve's luckily here as well, might be able to answer the... Zoom in a little bit here. In the southwest corner, this detention area here is designed for the stormwater detention.
Well, and also, the other PUD behind Sioux, I know someone who lives on Sioux was worried about, as I've had somebody express worry here, about water standing there, and mosquitoes and everything. How long does water stand in something like that?
Steve, could you answer that a little bit better?
It's really... It is detention. It will depend on the subdivision and the size of the pond, but it's intended to maintain a dry bottom. Oftentimes, you know, it's seeded and mowed. You know, it's not going to be more than a day that the water stands in there.
But would that sufficiently control the flow that would then go on down the hillside onto the golf club? Onto the golf course, I guess?
Yeah, I imagine this will be hard piped, and then the slow outfall from that would be hard piped to either the existing sewer, or could be outletted down the easement adjacent to the golf club.
So this would go into a sewer, not... I guess that's what I need. Does it run into a sewer then, or does it run onto the property?
Usually, it outlets through a pipe into sewer.
Okay, so...
A small outlet pipe from the pond.
Okay.
I just want to... Now, I was under the impression that actually this was going to be... That this was going to eliminate a lot of the... That there'd be more water, that there'd be more of a water problem without having the addition than there would ever have. And I was just concerned with the house that's at, I guess, north... Northwest, kind of sits down. I was concerned... That was my concern, but I was... I was just wanting somebody to break it down and explain it. Somebody had mentioned how, but there's no addition, that it was going to take care of... There was going to be less water than what they have right now. Is that... Is that the case?
Usually, I try to design the outflow to meet the current outfall over the lot pre-developed, so a slower rate over the grass is what we look at to design the outlet rate from the If it was just concreted and allowed to flow, the rate would be faster than without the pond.
And Eric, how does this differ from these other... You said they're alike, and yet they differ from these other PUDs. In what ways does it differ?
And differ might be, I guess, kind of the perception. It's near an established neighborhood. The Mason Meadows was built, I guess, the condominiums were on the west side, which was adjacent to the airport. This has some homes on the west side, but also it's near the golf course, so there's some homes near it, and the other ones, I guess, are the real perceived, were kind of more green development. They're in open space, but no prior development around them. But this does have, to the south, there's no development to the south and no development to the east, so in that aspect, it's kind of similar.
And is there a minimum size for a PUD?
Two acres is the minimum.
Two acres?
And that's defined in our code.
Okay.
And this is two point...
So everything on this does meet code? There's no question about it?
It meets code, and the PUD's an agreement between the city and the developer, so I guess it's... There's not a set regulation for a PUD. The PUD's an agreement between the city and the developer. It's not like an art, just a typical R1 where you have a...
So it's an ongoing agreement with the owner, then, as far as upkeep and...
Yeah, well, what's approved by the council is an ordinance, and it's rezoning the property, and that ordinance is the zoning code for the property, then.
And then, the owner then keeps up the mowing and the property and...
Yeah, that's just like any other development. That's either if they don't mow it, it's a nuisance. They could have that in their condo association, but it's no different than a single-family development. If they don't mow it, then we do a nuisance there as well, so...
Okay, thank you.
This petition that we have here, Eric, is that... Did I read that right? Because the neighbors filed petition, and it requires a supermajority?
Yeah, under our current zoning code, 20% of the neighbors within 200 feet, which in this case, there's 15 neighbors within 200 feet, so I'd like three to file a petition, and a supermajority, they didn't meet that.
Okay. Anything else right now, counsel? Not right now. I will have something probably. Okay. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to address this issue?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Just a...
Can you have more clarification? That was always R1.
Yes. Okay.
I would like to ask, I know a number of you are here, you have strong feelings about neighborhoods, but if we can keep this going without repeating the same thing over and over, I'd appreciate that. Todd, could you turn that light back on, please? Thank you.
Your name and address, please, and your comments would be appreciated.
Okay, my name is Gary, this is Mule, I live on 2320 Diamond. I'm right off of Crystal there. My only concern, or my main concern, I guess, is the issue of congestion. It sounds like some of you have already been out there. If you notice on Florence, between Cliff and between Crystal, there are many, many kids out there, and there's some newer families that have moved there. A lot of the residents park their cars out there as well. And just thinking in terms of the amount of additional vehicles that we're coming in there, that could pose a potential safety concern. So in terms of that, I have concern with that. And, you know, in terms of Mr. Zager, when he's all single-family residential, putting some housing up, nothing wrong with that. But it seems like with the density of the amount of people in that small area, that that could be a potential issue with safety, from my perspective. So in terms of people getting hit or hurt, whatever the case may be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. Anyone else wishing to speak to this issue?
Steve Hawes, 3101 Crystal Drive. Third time I've been up here on this issue. My wife and I have a significant vested interest in our home in this well-established R1 neighborhood. I want to point out that there's been a little change in the PUD since it was originally presented two and a half years ago. There's been some setback changes, square footage, this, that, and that thing, but the issue still remains, that we've got multifamily units in an R1, and I respectfully disagree with what Eric said. If you would read Section 17... I've heard this, third time you've heard it, but I'm going to go through it again, because people don't seem to understand here. 17.20.402, the zoning and subdivision code for PUDs has the following statement. However, in no case shall the purpose or intent of zoning and plating be violated. This is an established R1. By introducing multifamilies, you have violated that. And it's in... It's right here. Okay? And also, I want to point out, the ordinance itself even says this, under Section Three of the ordinance. This agreement shall not violate the purpose and intent of the plating and zoning ordinances. So again, you violated it. And then subsequently, in the same statement, they talk about putting in the PUD, they're putting duplexes in, same as condo, in an R1 area. So even the PUD, it contradicts itself. I will try and be short, trust me, but I've got some real issues here. And also, I looked at R1, single-family. The chart that's in there, the only thing that's allowed are single-family dwellings, and this is in 17.20.03. Nowhere in there does it allow condos or multifamily. And if you guys want to rewrite this or the planning, go ahead, but you're contradicting what's in the code itself. And finally, I understand the council's got a tough job here, and you've got responsibility for economic development in the city of Burlington. But don't forget, you also have responsibility for upholding the rights of current property owners. And I feel that this thing's gone for two and a half years, and the focus has been on the developer, not the existing people that have to live there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Barbara Hahn. I live at 3216 Crystal Drive. First of all, I'd like to clarify something about the petition. We knew that only so many people had to sign it to make it viable. It does not reflect the number of people who are against the PUD on our street and in the area. And I think that, you know, people who have followed this for the last several years have seen the numbers of people who repeatedly come to protest about this. We are currently R1. It will not be R1 if this PUD goes ahead. Let's, you know, make that very clear. They said that they did the R1 setbacks. Well, yes, on the sides, but we basically have two houses with zero setback from each other, when we have duplexes. Sunrise West was developed as a retirement-type thing. Mason Meadows just developed in an area in which there were fields. It was not smack in the middle of an R1 section in which two houses were taken down. I think that everyone in... Currently, in R1 area could be very surprised to learn that two houses next to them could be taken down, and instead duplexes would be put up. Now, I think that we're glossing over some things about the code. And if you do look at page 50, just as Steve said, in no case was it meant to violate the zoning ordinance. In the bottom of page 50, part of this was meant to be open space. If you look at the purpose of a PUD, it is to provide open... If you look at the purpose of a PUD, it is to provide open, shared recreational area. Instead, we have an area with a lot of driveways, very small grass, much higher density of population than anywhere within probably a mile radius. It was mentioned that concrete will lead to more problems, I want you to look at that drawing, and how much will actually be any green space? There'll be a swamp on the left there, and then we have some green areas, but basically we have houses, and from here, it really doesn't show even how much of an overhang of porches they could have, driveways and a cul-de-sac. Now, I've lived in this area since nineteen eighty, it's the worst clay in the world, it doesn't drain, it will sit there, because we see that over and over. I think one of the biggest things that has been overlooked along this way, page fifty-two, just right back from the very beginning, seventeen point twenty point four one two, what does the developer have to do to start this process? To initiate action, he has to file with the commission the following, a major site plan and supported drawings. You can't even provide that to us tonight. You're going to vote on that based on, oh yeah, this was an old plan we have, and it's gonna change, this isn't it. Also, it requires, before this is even brought up for consideration, written documentation, including legal description, development schedule, and most important, the copy of the proposed covenants and other proposed restrictions. I have been asking for this and asking for this. What are the rules of this? Just now Eric said, oh, it'll be everybody's individual responsibility to cut the grass. That's not even what it says in that page. It says that it will be treated as one owner. Now, who is responsible for maintaining the swamp area to the left there? Who decides where the grass cutoffs are? Who decides what restrictions there are? You are told by the city code on page fifty-two that you can't even accept this for filing without those proposed covenants. Now, obviously, there's confusion between Eric's interpretation and the city code interpretation. Water from the golf club, oh yes. I lived through this in about eighty-two, with even the development of the houses, and I think that you can see the spacing of the houses in the other drawing, not this one, but unfortunately, they've cut off the backyards of some of them. Even with that kind of development, and a few houses, there's still a lot of green area, a berm had to be developed, the DNR came in and was very unhappy with the runoff down into the lower streams. So, I, I'm, have great concerns about all the cement and that. You are being asked to sign something as the mayor acting for the council that says that you're approving this PUD. It also has a section in it that says that the staff may then make changes to requirements in the PUD. I'm sorry, but we just, this just seems as if it's so much smoke. No, what are you approving? You're going to hand over then any other approval to someone else, you don't have the plat, you don't have any of the provisions and covenants that page fifty-two of your own code says you have to have to even consider. So why is this here for approval? This was R1, it's not meant, one of the, the PUDs shall be approved, it says, if it generates two thousand vehicles a day. It may be approved for areas of greater than two acres. Why, why the switch from R1? And why would you ever want to be in a position as a city council of approving something without the details that the code requires of you? Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, do you have any comments?
Would you like comments on, I guess...
About her questions?
I guess, as far as the filing, doesn't say it has to have the proposed covenants, it says all restrictions proposed by development, he has provided some restrictions on, I guess, within the PUD of maintaining landscaping, that is, within the PUD, we haven't, I guess, required covenants, if that's something the council wants to do, maybe that, but we do have some restrictions that he has provided. As far as the PUD language, it does say specifically, zoning district requirements pertaining to area height, setbacks may be modified, and various land use mixtures may be permitted with appropriate screen landscaping and buffers.
I think that's the case.
However, in no case, in no case shall the purpose and intent of zoning, plating be violated, so it does state in the PUD ordinance that specifically, we can weigh acre requirements, we can change land uses. The purpose of zoning is to provide adequate light and air to prevent overcrowning of land, to avoid undue concentration of population, regulate the use of land, promote the health, safety, morals, comfort, convenience in general, in the city of Burlington, in conjunction with the comprehensive plan adopted by the city council, which just does it. The PUD is a zoning code, it's a zoning district, just like an R1, it is an overlay zone, it works in conjunction with the R1, just because something's R1 doesn't mean by our code, that's all it can ever be, the PUD was put in by the city council and adopted by the city council to allow some flexibility such as this, so to say it violates the code, is the way it's written, and if you look at the whole section of the code, it specifically states, you can't have a mixture of land uses, you can't allow different requirements other than what the R1 is. What that addresses.
Okay, yeah, that's, thank you, Eric.
Well, Eric, real quick, I have a question on seventeen dot twenty dot four oh nine, it talks about city council, approval of a PUD shall be by ordinance and shall include the plans, maps, reports, and conditions of the, of the PUD, are those final plans, are those final, you know, mappings and reports, or is it just, you know, like the other one at, on the four oh two, where you were addressing what it could be?
They are general plans, we have additional plans beyond this that show the infrastructure, show the grading and, I guess, layout of the property, this is just the general site plan. So those have been submitted to staff, I guess, conditions that compromise a PUD, that's within the PUD language, our PUD isn't just a rezoning from R1 to PUD, it is a bi-page document, a four-page document that lists out all the conditions, that's the language, there is a section on land use and bulk regulations, public roadway, public utilities, open space, architecture, and site design. To say, have them submit an exact final design, it's really dependent on, that's gonna limit them, on if someone comes in and says, I want a twenty-four hundred square foot unit, now they're tied to that, if that's what we're saying here, instead of someone might only, might say they want a twenty-eight hundred square foot unit, so that's not something we've ever done before, say, this is the exact and only layout of the property, within the PUD, it spells out the requirements, and as long as they meet those requirements, that's what we allow. If we want to get so specific that we're dictating the exact size of the property, then that's gonna require a lot more pre-sale and information upfront that, I don't know, the developer can forecast for a couple years down the road.
And I, I guess, if there's this five-page document, I don't know that we need to look at that, or has the city planning commission...
That's the ordinance in front of you tonight.
Oh, that, okay. Well, I thought, but the city planning commission has looked at all of this and, and felt we should approve this.
Yeah, they recommended approval at the last, we can provide additional, we've done a staff review of the infrastructure layout, that's approved by the city, any public works and auto works, with the grading, and if that's something we want to bring before council, we can, but we've generally got the site plan, and then the staff has approved the infrastructure and all the other plans. This still does have to go through a subdivision process, so that will come back to you as well.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Zager?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Ken, I, I hope that you have the ability with your computers to pull up the city code.
I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Barbara Hahn.
Barbara Hahn.
3216 Crystal Drive.
Yes, we've been looking at the code.
Good, because it does call for that kind of specificity, because this isn't the typical R1 zoning. And so it does say that these things have to be done specifically. At the bottom of page fifty-two, seventeen point twenty point four one two, what does it say about what a must, a developer must provide?
And I think he just answered that question.
Yeah, and that's what...
And, you know, hearing that, oh, we can't be that specific, this is a major change from an R1 to a PUD, yes, the code says you do have to be that specific, it charges you with that, and nothing less.
Thank you. Mr. Zager, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
I'd like to make sure everybody's done, so I can consider the comments.
Okay, that's fine, we'll reserve it to the...
Tim Larson, 3104 Crystal Drive, I will keep it short. One question with the discussion on the plans and stuff, I just want a clarification that, okay, we have a basic plan up there, and did I misunderstand that if you approve this, then when things start to get finalized, we can make buildings bigger?
Only if they meet the...
Only if they meet the setbacks and stuff.
The square foot, the square foot requirements, yes, if I'm correct.
Okay, so there is something that is set there that will restrict.
Correct, Eric.
It doesn't get a blank stamp of going, okay, do whatever.
They have to meet the setbacks, just like anything else, they can't build within that setback area.
Okay, which will restrict the size of the structure.
Yeah.
Thank you. As, you know, nothing has really changed in this plan for the last two and a half years, we have been, of course, up here many, many times, I just want to stress this, proposed development is not the right development for this area, yes, it looks good on paper, it meets everything, but you gotta sometimes take consideration what the area is. And I know all of you have been out there, and I appreciate you guys looking at it, so maybe I've even visited with us, which is outstanding, I just feel that this is not the correct use of a PUD overlay. Sunrise West, Mason Meadows, yeah, those are great, those are fields, this is shoehorned into a little, just over two acre area, and it just, I think, would just ruin the neighborhood, our great neighborhood. This is spot zoning, should remain R1 with single-family houses with lot sizes that are comparable to the area. This proposal has been voted down every time it's been brought up. I urge you to make a stand, protect our neighborhood, vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Eric, am I correct, excuse me, I have a question. Mr. Zager could build five houses at the same size, is that correct?
I guess I'd have to look at the lot layout, it'd be approximately that, this is, with the PUD, we have a cul-de-sac on the west side, our typical development, we'd have a cul-de-sac down the middle, I guess, it just kind of depends on how it's laid out.
All right.
Yeah.
But that large a residence still could be placed in there.
Yeah, yeah. And one, sorry to interrupt, but one section of the code too, under the R1, you can only cover thirty-five percent of the lot area with structures, so that limits, you're not just gonna be able to build ginormous homes, it's thirty-five percent of the lot, which is the same as the R1.
Yes, okay. Okay. Yes, sir.
My name, Tony Cannon, I live on 3112 Crystal Drive, I am the third house on Florence on the right side, I think I'm the most one that will be affected with this development, yes, it's on the north corner. I have two things, I try not to, the only thing, I'm gonna repeat what I said before, not repeat my colleague, because there's a new member in front of me, just want to remind you that I do have a sump pump in my backyard, considering about talking if the water will drain or not. If my sump pump stop, my backyard afflops. I know, you know, there is an incline there, but it makes it worse, so it's like my neighbor Barb said, it's a clay, yes, there's a lot of clay there, it takes forever for the water to dry out, and I take the water from the north side, from the south side of the house, and I dump it on the other side, so it runs down. So, if there is a problem, I might end up adding another sump pump in my backyard, not inside the house, in the yard, which is, I've never heard it until I bought the house. That's number one. Number two, I want to remind you, if we change the zoning from R1 to R2, on the south side, there is an empty lot, I think maybe it's bigger, maybe it's the same, anybody could put condos there again, and it even makes it worse. So if you rezone this plot, you should be able to rezone to the other area. And I do ask you, you're elected, and I do ask you, not to remind you, but I do ask you to protect my right and make sure I live in a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Anyone else with something else to add to the discussion? Mr. Zager?
I'm Stephen Zager of the developer for the proposed property, I'd like to just make a couple comments, appreciated all the thought tonight that went into the questions that were asked, and I felt like, almost like Becky did, I feel like a beginner all over again, because I think there's some clarifications that maybe Steve and Eric could help with. Number one, that the stipulation is regarding the water flow, it cannot exceed the previous flow from the water before the land was developed, so that's what the retention pond is all about on the land. Number two, retention ponds are not intended to hold water, they release water slowly, so the chances of actually holding water and building up a mosquito problem are pretty slim. And then, also, you asked a question, does it meet the city requirements? Comment was made that there hasn't been, there's only been minor adjustment to this project since the beginning. Actually, we started out with the road coming in the center and exiting out the opposite direction with the cul-de-sac, not a cul-de-sac, but a berm in the center, and the roadway was narrower, and we've converted that to meet all the city requirements, including a twenty-seven foot wide roadway, which actually is wider than many streets in Burlington, and on a lot this size, it's kind of debatable as to whether it's required or not, but we did want to meet the city codes. In addition, we spent quite a bit of time with Mr. Hartman discussing the project and making sure that it had all the specific city codes and street requirements. But I guess I'd like to summarize with this, that I think we've done a lot, and two and a half years is a long time to get to this point, but I do agree that good development needs to be patient, and we need to study trends and listen, and I think that's something that I've tried to be very patient with, because I understand that people live out here, they have concerns, but I think we've addressed the concerns from safety, water, and the other requirements. But there's some things that we need to look at also, and that is that there's a report that I read about US housing trends, generational changes, and the outlook up to two thousand and fifty. I'll be happy to share that study with Eric, but it says that patterns in housing are poised for dramatic change in the early decades of twenty-first century. And it goes on to say that, that the trend will be to replace existing units, much like I did by tearing down a house and putting in denser units so that people are closer together, and it creates actually a community environment for people, I know Bob lives in a condo down in Florida, and the people actually are drawn together, it makes for a very good community environment. Then, the next... Then the next thing that the study went on to say is that not only are they studying the demographics, age, but it goes in to talk about fuel consumption and all the reasons why that things are trending in this direction that they are. And I was impressed just by the title of it. And it's a paper prepared for the committee on the relationship among development patterns, vehicle miles traveled, and energy consumption. Transportation Research Board in the Division on Engineering and Physical Sciences. Now, what that really means is the study talks about energy, uses of property, age, demographics, miles traveled, et cetera. And it goes on to say that the majority of what we'll be seeing in the future is not negative approach to what they call attached single-family homes, that that's the trend, not condo meeting something bad, that you will see more and more of it. And I think that the planning department has done a great job, because they understand that this concept is being used widely in other cities in the state, Iowa City, for example. So as much as I feel that it's viewed somewhat negatively by the people out there, I think it's a very positive step. And all the demographics and the research that is done by people supports that. So I'd like to answer any questions the council has.
What would be your feeling or your target audience, who are you gonna sell these to?
The majority of the people, I don't want to get into age things, but are gonna be fifty-five plus.
I figured that was probably true, but.
And I think they make excellent neighbors and generally they're professional people. So I think regarding safety, I think the drivers will be probably, I'm trying to avoid negative comments here.
That's okay.
They'll be teenagers driving down the street, so.
I understand.
What about price range?
Bob, they're gonna be expensive. The only thing that hasn't come up from anybody is the disagreement regarding the quality. These will all be a combination of brick and hard siding, they're all beating vinyl siding. And architecturally, they're beautiful, with walkouts to the back. And so, once you get past the concern of, do I want this in my neighborhood, I think you'll start looking at it and say, this is exactly what we want in our neighborhoods. The last comment I got, really got, is that there's been a lot of discussion about current code. I think I'm more about the future personally. And I think that that's one of the things that we gotta be looking for opportunities to do, is to rewrite code so that we get the opportunity to attract new people. And I think that I'd like to see us firstly reverse the trend that we see regarding losing younger people and people moving outside our community. We really don't have something here that's not, we don't have to go a long way to look at something like this. We have Spirit Hollow, which is the combination of condominiums and million-dollar homes. So we can see, even in our own community, what it looks like. But I think the challenge that we have, and Eric has done a good job of pointing this out to me, is the infill. Burlington, we gotta be careful that Burlington doesn't look like a donut, an empty center with all the glazing on the outside of it. And that's really what this is all about, is infill and new thinking. So I'd ask the city council to move forward, agree with the neighbors out here, we've been at this long enough, I'd like to ask for your support. Thank you.
I have a question for you. Can you promise me that Tony's not going to have to put another sun pump in his backyard?
Well, you put me on the spot there, but I've been out there and I'd be happy to have the city engineer going out. The water going to this property does not come from my property. And I think you can see that by looking at it. But one of the advantages of what we're doing right here is, again, it's not negative, we have a plan, so that we know where the water's gonna go. So we're collecting the water. Problem is with the rest of the area out there, they don't, they didn't have a plan, and that's why they're having problems with water. So I'm appreciative of the fact that I've had to learn a few things in this process, but I feel pretty confident, but I guarantee you, my water's not gonna go to the neighbor's place. Is that a guarantee? I can tell it doesn't go that way.
I was about to say, I know where you live, but I really don't. But I just found out that Bob's got a condo in Florida. Ast has.
I don't think he felt like a, like a sacred citizen, from what I hear about his condo.
Okay, anything else, council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zager.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else coming forward, entertain a motion.
Are we gonna talk?
After we close the hearing.
Okay, motion to close, Sean.
Do we have a second? We do have a motion and a second to close the hearing?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Your motion, preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance rezoning properties locally known as twenty-two seventy and twenty-two Florence Avenue to include a planned unit development, the master PUD overlay zone as allowed by section seventeen dot twenty dot forty of the title seventeen for the Burlington Municipal Code, continued from the March fifth, twenty-twelve city council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, now we have discussion time. Council.
Well, you know, I sit here, and this is the third time this has been brought up, and I'm gonna touch briefly on a couple of things. You know, first one, we've talked in great length over the past two times on water runoff as well as vehicle safety. I look that we have within the city some very good engineers that could help us take care of the water runoff issues, that, you know, the retention pond will help too. Some of the water runoffs that we're looking at too, and Steve, please correct me if I'm wrong, is at the end of Florence where it goes into the golf club. And right now, it goes from cement to gravel. And so that's where we're getting a lot of the ready. So, but a lot of this development is, you know, just open grass areas right now, so we're not gonna get potentially the same amount of rain, we're just going to move the water more so. So I'm confident that our city engineers and Steve are going to be able to come up with a better way for water runoff. Vehicle safety, I understand the concerns on vehicle safety. If you put nine units in there, you know, one residential home and then some duplexes, but I don't look at it as any different if there were four single-family homes and somebody has four teenagers and they all drive vehicles. And then their friends come over and you have a couple of them like that, you're gonna have the same amount of vehicles. So vehicle traffic, yes, it's a great concern, but we don't have control over that. That's the certain thing. And, you know, but what it comes down to is, this is a true R1 area. And are we spot zoning because of the PUD, or are we, does it become R2? You know, I looked at all the codes, and I thank everybody for coming up and, you know, addressing all those and, you know, and the R1, single-family residential district, it doesn't say anything about duplexes. But then in our future land use plan, the whole city of Burlington is almost single-family backslash duplexes. So I guess I need to get a better clarification, you know, within, how do we come up with the future land use plan? And do we even consider the ordinance as a seventeen twenty dash oh-three? So I guess I would ask you, Eric, you know, how do you compare that? And, you know, what is a duplex? Is a duplex considered an R2 or an R1?
Well, the PUD, it doesn't matter what the base zone is, it's what you wanna make of it. The PUD, I mean, spot zoning would be putting commercial or industrial in this area. Spot zoning's not putting single-family duplex together, those are the most compatible uses we have in the city. You can't, I guess getting more compatible than a duplex and a single-family. So, I mean, we have areas in town, I guess, to address spot zoning, we have neighborhood commercial areas, just because they're small, that's not spot, illegal spot zoning. We look at the conditions and we look at, I guess, the uses of that. The future land use map does just depict single-family and duplex. That was adopted by the council almost twenty years ago. It's a guide to, if someone wants to rezone, it says, if it's single-family or duplex, then it should be considered by the council, could be approved. If someone comes in here and wants, multiple family wants apartments with three or four units, it wouldn't be allowed by our future land use map, so we'd either have to amend our future land use map or not allow it. But the single-family duplex just sets up the condition that you can approve it based on the conference plan adopted by the city council.
I have some comments. I can certainly understand the anxiety and agony of your area changing. And I think the worst thing that ever happened in Burlington was probably the freeway coming down through and people finding a freeway in their backyard. So I can understand that. But when I first heard about this, before I even considered going on the council, I thought, good, this'll give, you know, other people a place to live out by the golf club. And I read quite a bit on city development and, and a lot of what I read, of course, is against sprawl and about infill and, you know, about suburbia and how suburban neighborhoods are not built for generations. And so there is a trend more towards this type of thing, because what happens when you no longer need that big house, you wanna stay out there by the golf club, and you don't need that big house? What are your options? Do you move to another part of town? This would give another option, I feel, to people that wanna stay in that neighborhood. The other thing I feel is that sometimes we have young professionals coming in, and they may want to buy something like that, and that might be an entry point to them in that neighborhood later if a house is for sale, that they may move into that, into one of those condos and then feel that they are looking for a house in that neighborhood and then later buy a house. I just don't feel it's going to negatively affect the value of the homes there. I guess I, I guess, yeah, I would not like it, you know, to have lived there all those years and to have that in my backyard. I probably wouldn't. But it fits, you know, it answers all the code, I'm not against the idea, I think it's a good idea to have that type of option. And so I, I guess I, I'm having, every time, I guess, that something comes up, I see a plus for it. But overall, I guess I feel that this type of development in areas like that are good, because it gives another option to people as they retire, to have a smaller place to live, or somebody who doesn't wanna live here twelve months out of the year, they can live there and live somewhere else, so. And I think people are looking for that type of thing. The most thing I was worried about was this water runoff, and I think that's been answered tonight.
One thing too, Mr. Zager's done everything that we've asked him to do, and the development committee has asked him everything to do too. You know, he's always came back with changes from two and a half years ago. But it's not like it's the same plan each and every time. There has been changes and compromises along the way.
Mr. Fleming, you have anything?
First of all, I do not have a condominium in Florida.
Too bad.
Shucks, I was gonna ask if I could borrow it. I wish that I did. I don't have much to say, I've been on record for months, I'm in favor of this. I'm excited about it, I think Burlington needs this, and I think it'll sell quickly, because I think it's gonna be a quality development that this community needs. And I don't see it degrading any homes in the area, and I'm just very positive about it. I think it's a good thing for the city, I think it's a good thing for the people that 'll live there. End of speech.
Thank you. Want to remind council, we need four votes to continue. This is the first reading, we have two more readings to go two weeks and then two weeks we'll have it two more times come out in front of us. I'm going to vote in favor, just to make sure we keep the discussion going. And so if we have no more comments, I'd call for the vote.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
And the motion's carried, and we'll have the second reading in two weeks. Thank you all for your comments. Next, we have a resolution.
I have a resolution approving final plat of Hawkeye Estate subdivision. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the Hawkeye Estate subdivision. This is an outside the city subdivision. Eric has got it up there already, look at this.
This is a subdivision south of the city limits in the two-mile subdivision area that the city has review of within the county. It is a lot south of the airport on Summer Street, right here, approximately three and a half acres in size. They're looking to split the lot in half, just a simple two-lot subdivision, two-lot construction of two separate structures. Does meet all our city requirements, does not require any city infrastructure, so we recommend approval of that.
This is just a routine thing that's required because they're in the two miles.
And this has already been approved by the New York County Supervisors.
Okay. Anyone from the audience wishing to comment? Council, you have any questions or comments? Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Now we have time for comments from the audience. Anyone from the audience who wishes to address something that has not already been discussed?
I'd like for the council to recommend, my Stan has a new haircut tonight.
China, nobody. Stan Strad, twenty-nine, Chama Drive, I got a few questions. Sidewalk, you're gonna be putting sidewalk out there for Aldo. I hope the offset is back further than those on Irish Ridge Road and Cliff Road. They're so close to the road, you have children there, somebody's gonna get hurt. Plus, when they plow, most of that stuff's thrown on the sidewalk, how's that gonna be safe for kids? I hope they set that back further. I don't know if there's a minimum or what, it looks like about two foot.
That's been in the plans and specs that we approved earlier, wasn't it, Eric and Steve?
Yeah, I believe it's farther back, Cliff Road is very close to the back of the curb.
Cliff Road and Irish Ridge Road are.
Right.
Too close.
I, I don't have it memorized, but I think we're eight to ten feet behind, which is considerably farther than the condition of the Cliff Road.
Yeah, that Cliff Road thing was.
I mean, it's going to be.
Right.
Yeah, I think it needs to be.
That Cliff Road thing was property issues.
For the kids too, and you know, I don't think they're safe. Another thing, we don't have anything to do with the Burlington Transit system, I don't think, do we?
We have, we have a transit system, yes.
Okay, here's my.
Part of the urban service.
Not very often I get out riding around, I ain't got no money for cash. Up there Boke Street School the other day and I see a transit bus, and they transfer children, obviously. They have some kind of contract, which is good. The bad thing is, they stop in the middle of the street with flashers on, and kids get out and go right in front of that bus. Well, I don't know how long we've been doing that, that's asking for a headache, isn't it?
That's standard procedure.
I see, we've been doing it for a while.
Yeah, that's standard.
Yeah, but you know, caution doesn't mean stop. You've got kids coming in front of that bus, going across traffic.
When that bus, when that bus stop light, stop sign pops out, everybody's supposed to stop.
Burlington Transit, they're the white.
It's a city bus.
There's the white ones, yeah.
I understand.
See what I'm saying? I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I understand, exactly. And that's, should be on the kids, they're not, they shouldn't be doing that. They need to go to the crosswalk and wait for traffic.
If they exit and go to the right.
That's what they're supposed to do.
But I'm telling you, I seen it.
We can let the schools know, let them know.
Yeah. I'm not gonna walk in front of it, you know, somebody's gonna get hurt somehow.
Yeah.
Could I just clarify that Burlington Urban Service does not contract for school children, they ride by affair, same as you or I would.
Oh, do they? Okay, so I didn't know that. That's why I asked.
We would promote and encourage them to get off the bus and migrate to the curb, so just like students on the yellow bus, some of them break the rules and they do.
But they do have a stop sign out there, though, traffic's stopped both ways there. Traffic stop both ways there. The other bus there now, all they have is caution lights.
Right. Burlington Urban does not have the stop sign.
That's right. Another question, what have we heard about the old Dresser-Rand building down there?
The proposals for the demolition will come in, I believe they're due tomorrow.
Yeah. Because wasn't there people just about interested in doing that for the salvageable material in there? That extra $120,000, I think we get that thing down for that kind of money, I think we should jump on it.
Right. And we had to go follow the code and the law by putting it out for bid.
It's one thing I agree with you guys on, so.
One out of three, that's it.
Okay, I got one more question.
You know, I'm always. Now, Stan, you always say, one more question, one more question, one more question. This comes up and say I have 10 questions and well, no.
Cascade Bridge. Mrs. Clark and some other gentleman put up money to get that check? Is that proceeding?
We, no, the proposal again went out to the other engineering firms that are able to do that, the proposal went out.
Because they wanted that money to go to a specific firm.
Right, that's what I wanted.
And that specific firm did not sort of meet the standards of what Shapiro wanted, I believe.
Well, it wasn't that so much, but it didn't buy anything.
Yeah, it didn't accomplish anything.
All it said was, we'll have this firm come in for $3,000 and tell you who to go to to do.
Yeah.
There are legitimate, well-qualified contractors throughout the state of Iowa and I think we've asked every one of them to bid on this.
Yep.
And then we can move ahead. You guys going to put that up for vote? I hope not.
Don't you think we could have some say on it being for paying for? One of the cascade bridges?
Yeah. What about the sewer separation? You raised my sewer fee for that, didn't you? Yeah, good. That's a necessity. Right. That is a necessity.
So, maintaining the main streets.
That bridge is a necessity. How long we got along without it?
Is there something else, Stan, that you want to talk about?
You going to put up for vote or not?
I can't answer that question. We're not at a point to answer that question.
What about work sessions? Going to start televising them?
I think the general consensus of the council was no, unless I hear differently.
You guys see a lot of good information here that a lot of people don't have, I think, but they'd be interested in it. Your proposal for the dog shelter was in there, the new police station, Cascade Bridge, replacing the ties down there off the bridge all the way through town. You had films and you had given a presentation on it.
That was a good presentation on that.
Agreed, the Hawkeye covers it, it's not like living in it.
Well, my take on that, Stan, if we televise it or don't televise it, I, number one, I want everybody to come down to the meetings because even if you televise it, people are still going to miss quite a bit. With the work sessions, there's a lot of different conversations that are having, that we're having on and if we're televising it, people at home aren't going to understand everything that goes on. And plus, I asked and I also looked to myself, there is no other communities within the state of Iowa that televises their work sessions.
You guys want to be on cutting edge, you got your cameras.
You know where I'm still at on that, you know, I'm.
Well, I think it'd be very informative and I would like to say, if you think it's going to raise questions, maybe they'd come down here if they had a question, they see on that work session.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you, Stan.
Todd Arnold, 401 Jefferson Street. I'd just like the council to consider listing on the next agenda for council meeting, adoption of the Dubuque City Code. I feel that it would be a great tool in assisting in the development of the historic buildings downtown.
We had, we had a discussion about that in our last work session. Todd, you were here for that too.
And I think we're, didn't.
We're going to test and follow up on that eventually, but I can't tell you when.
Because isn't legal going to look at that also?
Yeah, I think if you put it as a form of resolution for the work session, then that's, they'll have to vote on it right away and I think they need a little more research into it before they go forward.
So, I guess, how long do we research something like that before it become, you know, I, how long, how do you keep something from just fading away, I guess?
That'll be up to you. We can do this, that's no problem.
No, I mean, I, I guess, I'm new to the council, so how long do they research? I mean, who researches it? Do you, Eric, or?
Yeah, our department would look at it, look at other communities. I have contacted Dubuque specifically and will try and get some more information to you, if not this work session, then the following, and then you can make a decision whether to put it on the agenda. That is an ordinance, it would have to go through a sub date and three readings.
Well, I'd certainly, if you guys would like to, you know, work together prior to that, would, you know, like to be involved in, you know, try to find out any concerns or anything like that, I think.
You may be able to answer this question for me, Todd. Is there any other cities that have adopted Dubuque Cities Code? And if so, do you know who they are?
That's a good question. I don't know that, but I think.
That's where, you know, the investigation looks at and so we would have to.
And I, and I understand that there may be concerns, but I think that we could probably work together to address those.
You want to make comment on what Todd said?
You need to come to the microphone. I'm sorry, before you go, Todd, I want to, I had Donna my note here to comment about the downtown upstairs tour yesterday and I just thought that was really tremendous experience and so, thank you for opening your building.
Well, thank you for coming.
For people to come down.
We got some nice comments.
Eric? Yes. Okay.
Hi, my name is Bob Gabby. I'm at 6262 108th Avenue in Burlington. I just wanted to comment on the question that was asked of Todd, that I know of, there are no other cities within Iowa that follow the Dubuque Code. However, the Dubuque Code was actually adopted from five cities in Wisconsin. So, so it is being used somewhere else, but not that I know of in Iowa.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else from the audience wishing to speak about something that hasn't been discussed already? Mrs. Baker, hi.
Good evening.
How are you, Mary?
Fine. I, I am happy to discuss something that has bothered me for quite some time and it has to do with the properties in the city that are left to deteriorate. You go down, if you come up Angular Street from Garfield, come up the hill and go on one of those side streets that go to the north, you see deteriorating houses. Now, what I'm discussing right now, I can't think of the name of the street in front of the field house. What is it?
Market.
Market?
Market.
Okay. It's partially one-way and you have to turn. You can come in from Sixth Street, you make a right turn and you come to the field house. Now, the gentleman from, he works at Pruse, he has reconditioned that building there and he has asked to have permission to make it a two-way street. And I have seen plenty of other streets in this city that are, aren't as wide as that street. And when you turn off of Sixth to come down to the field house, that's a two-way, well, it's a one-way area. But what I'm here for, and I want you all to look at these, this picture, there are two different pictures, I took them today. This is just on the north side, across from the field house, there's a broken fence. It's been that way for many years, directly above the halfway house. It is a hazard for people that come in from out of town and park their cars along there to go to a football game or a basketball game. And you come in from Central, then you have to make a right turn by the field house and go to Division because you can't go back down Market Street to Sixth Street to go across the bridge. And the gentleman from Pruse asked that it be a two-way street. It's partially that way and he has redone that building, I just noticed it, because he's done such a good job on reconditioning that building. And as I go around through the city and see so many, you have redone a few homes, some person had young people from the halfway house or wherever they're from to work and learn how to do trades like we used to do in high school. We build a house, but you no longer do that. Now, I have, let's see, two different pictures I want you to look at. Now, this is direct, just a little ways up from the field house. And I have, I've been down to see our person over there, he told me they can't do nothing about it. It's private property. It's directly above the halfway house. They could have somebody from the halfway come up and put a fence up there. Now, that's a hazard.
Well, I think, Mary, that one of the things that we'll probably.
Go back to the microphone.
Ask the new city manager when he gets on board in April, is to look at a lot of these nuisance properties.
See, this is something that.
Can you go back to the microphone, Mary, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot what I was saying.
Watch your step. Watch your step, though.
Be careful.
You're trying to start losing.
Be careful. Wait, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
But, what I want to say is, it is a hazard and there's no reason that whoever owns that fence, most of that fence is bad, but this area, did you pass the picture?
Yes.
Okay. You see what it's like?
Yes.
And the school, their fence is okay, but this is where people park to come to a football game or a basketball game. And then the gentleman that has redone that business asked to have the street opened up.
Yeah, and the council addressed that.
You're going to address?
No, we already did.
It's been done.
Did you tell him no?
Yeah, we told him no. Yes, we told him no.
But can't you reconsider?
I don't see any reason to.
You really don't?
I know.
Mary, that's, that's a.
We talked about this long.
I know, I, I know, you refused him. You refused him. Now, he spent a lot of money on that building. I'm not just talking for him, but I have been downstairs to the nuisance, he's going to retire. And there's a house on Angular. When I come from Garfield to Summer, this is rental property. This person is in charge of rental property. That white house that sits on the south, it's a part, well, it's apartment house, sits on the south side of the street. The window in the upper floor, there's nobody up there now. There used to be two families living in it. The window stays open winter and summer. Right now, there's somebody living downstairs. You know the house I'm talking about, there's apartment house on the corner of Summer. And I don't understand how the people that are in charge of the department don't take care of these things. But that picture there is a hazard for people coming into Burlington, parking their cars and it is a eyesore, not only a safety hazard.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what you say, thank you, but you don't do nothing about it.
Well, we have a system in place, we have processes in place, Mary.
You are processing.
You've been on the council before.
I know.
Yeah.
And most of the business is done down there. And do you now have your, your meeting every other month? Is it here also or is it still in the small office?
Right here.
That's good. I'm glad you do that. But I am concerned about that safety hazard.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to have it taken care of because you ask who it belongs to, nobody knows. And you know exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I wanted to say to Shane, you're ready. What did I tell you? One day up here.
Are you ugly?
I want to hear this.
No. You know what I told you. I said, I don't know if you're ready, but I think you are.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Bye-bye.
Good to see you, Ken.
Okay.
Eric from Trea, 907 High Street. I have a, kind of a different topic to bring up. There's a lot of people in town that are, have moved to using satellite dishes as opposed to cable television. And with the new changes to the room, which are great, and the new broadcast, which is much better than it used to be, I was wondering if it'd be possible for the city council to move this to also to exist as a webcast. That way, folks that don't have access could review it at a later time, perhaps they're not available in those hours.
For the guy in the back.
I did ask Rich that question earlier and had something to do with bandwidth capacity or is that correct?
Come up to the mic, Rich.
Our tech guy just happens to be here, Eric.
In his best.
He said a piece of cake. Right from soccer practice, but as, we do hope as part of this remodel, we've got some more product to pursue that we could, right now, we're recording it onto a DVD media and it's kind of a labor-intensive process to transcode that and produce it to put it on the web, but we're hoping to capture it in a different way that can make it somewhat more automated and have it posted to the web, but it would involve hiring a company to host it. We don't have the bandwidth to host it in-house or the means, so we're going to pursue some of those things, but it's probably not a near-term fix.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Okay, Eric? Anyone else? Time for council comments and city, interim city manager comments.
I'm good.
Okay. I do want to remind folks that the leaf collection program begins next Monday, a week from today. Oh, that's after that. Runs for three weeks and then I think the city wet cleanup begins after that, so they do their leaf collection first and then.
Well, I have a little comment. I hope people saw that Burlington was mentioned in the Des Moines Register on Sunday, a very positive article and, and I think it was, it was really great to see that, to open up and see that.
Anyone else, council?